Thank you, members. I call the House on the move.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just to say that the agreement is over, the House has approved the amendments. We agree with the content of the amendments, but this clearly does not mean it to be a big issue. So as soon as we turn in the motions, I think we need to see the amount of floor and the amount of detail that was wanted for the spot set before us to so clearly support it. It is a responsibility of everyone in this room to do everything they can to make changes in detail. To bring my role for change in the culture in Liverpool, who is adhering to a short term across the party to make all the changes. So I hope this is a beginning, a fresh start in Liverpool. Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
And the amendments have been received from Council HMM, which is attached as an amendment to its own, to its own. Is the amendment accepted? Thank you. And I invite Council HMM to speak on these amendments.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to, at least we part in the rural services offices, meeting each other and studying how we react, how we do things together, so much as a little zoo. And I'm honoured by the way that our office is fizzling or physically and in terms of very difficult services offices, if we're saying we're operating together to benefit it so we can go to some sort of rational decisions today. And also I'd like to thank Mr Alan Bertisji, a highly experienced team of people who've worked inside councils. But his team had a fundamental flaw. When the ordinary commission used to do discussions of council councils, they always had a negative member on the table. You know, a pair of viewers who love the government association take place, they always have a negative member on the table. There was no such number on the team that depended to the level. And my coming House of Commons will be seeking to encourage you to defend the resolution that this council presented on the 30th of January, which was both forthright, was unanimously supported from a working group led by House of Commons, to say that we cannot go to less councils because many councils just couldn't manage to work. And a system in which one person is a councillor does allow for all the special responsibilities that some people have, outrage upon their house's tenancy. So here we tell you why that is wrong, we should say, to our original decision. And my coming House of Commons will be dealing with the culture issue first. You see, we can move that chair and by rather often checking governance structure, having a committee here, a side committee there, or a power of all show, which saw the store as an earlier meeting shared by a council side with a very long meeting. I think we were all so alarmed to have it shot by a wish saw about all the resulting that existed within the council. So we have to accept that we need to change the structures. We need to change the way we behave to each other, the way that we behave to staff, perhaps even more than we, the way that stuff probably is sold to each other. Now, I must say, some disappointed that the motion moved today. That's why we recommend it to improve the vote taken away from our decision, which we all made, saying with a discussion. But this is our first opportunity as a council to respond publicly and in a manner to the power of the House. And I thought this response was a bit needy. Because it seems to show the fact that the services in which we made it are highly exceptional. A council where 16 people, sorry, 50 people have been arrested 16 times, including performers who believe themselves, is absolutely unheard of in Liverpool, anywhere in this country. A system where the sex is ongoing based with investigations, unheard of. A situation where we have somebody to discuss, as she finds, unheard of. A situation which £100 million has been collected on this thing, not probably attractive, absolutely unheard of. And as before, we look at the £80 million which has been wasted on several cities and the movement of strategy, which is designed in our view to prevent the council of being worked effectively and of course increase the possibility of debate. On the other hand, was whether we should give it a cost or more money to stop work now and get it right, or whether we should finish it and then put it up again. That's another £80 million of money totally wasted and very responsible. So this is a tale of two things, a corrupted council and potentially corruption. And a power of all shows us that this is indeed a corrupted council. A total lack of due process in one very, very key, very, very important department. Money spent without proper authorisation. And I'll give you a couple of examples. Two of the most million might be spent by this house to provide accommodation for a large house, which should have been made for a developer. But the agreement and no one made a counter. Four and a half million, and I'm glad, in section one of six, that could have been provided some facilities for everyone here who wrote the petition to say. So it's a corrupted council. But I am pleased to acknowledge, when I say this with a very liberal top table, that our statutory officers group is beginning to get through this. For some of that, it is past history. And others are arrested as well in process, which perhaps will be improved first of all by the camera investigation, but perhaps also by a sort of change in the description of the crime. The other side of that is potential corruption. And we must acknowledge that people have been arrested, not just a person that's been charged yet, perhaps, and will be. And I suspect that going for the summer, there will be more arrests, but charges will be made. And then in the two legal processes that we run with, that are probably higher in British legal system, we move to a proper consideration of those charges, if any. So what we want to do is to acknowledge that problem more than as we work in the motion. We also acknowledge the progress that's been made. And to agree with first, who I think we can definitely see this way, although she's decided to refer to Jake Hiss, yeah, as a legal officer, to acknowledge the people's work to help us. We must minimise our differences, and there were still the differences, there's one today. While we minimise our differences, what we must do is in dignified and courteous way. But wherever we sit, we must work together on these key and difficult issues. If we do that, we can actually build a council in which our citizens will be happy. At the moment, I just tell you that our citizens, our city, is better than the council. If we work, we need to correct that, my deputy lord. And this pledge should work with your registration, but it will never need to solve our problems, which the power of all is about. My deputy lord, I move the motion on behalf of my office.
And I invite councillor Andrew Wadsworth as the second to take his turn into the House of Commons, please.
Thank you, my deputy lord. As the law has been said, you are the president. The proposals in the House of Commons are sound and sensitive measures that represent a global change, which all opposition members have been in this term advocating. However, these words are good as a short ad hoc. Most of the council's previous offices would look perfectly reasonable to casual observer. The reality of course was often very different. And the capacity and capability of the key to solving the trust and show of policy can be adopted easily. That means the law needs to smoothly pass the board in the convenience. So the remedies must be resolved properly, and the search for all superior opposition members of the council group. And every member of the council needs to prove to us all the pressures of the recent determination before they would propose anything important. They have to question all the leadership and bad policies of the council. The councillor asks the detail of our decision to make. That council should have said that there is a loss, we need to be the answer. Decisions must be backed over by a shared or profiled evidence, rather than relying on evidence after the decision is made. Sadly, this is worth considering, as it tells them, actively confusing to some of the evidence's supporting assumptions on improved democratic capability. We will fully elections and increase capability, although it reduces it. We will single out the wars where the councils closer to residents, although it reduces diversity in communities, all considered, or all considered in the areas where the results tend to be more open. Now, the boundary question has to measure how many councils the community is to what the city is decided on or wants to continue with the narrative. Not only the speeches we concert, sadly, it seems those who are making these decisions definitely need to explain themselves, which, as we all know, is partly in the situation of this. My deputy lord.
And I invite councillor Wadsworth to the House of Commons, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Members of the council, I welcome any data in the city. Two hundred and fifty go along progress that could have to gain to achieve a better, better, better status. So it's very exciting for me to have to read the report, and it's quite upsetting to my listeners that they now are reading this report, and they just are in disbelief. Nobody, nobody, no members such have to go to work and be afraid or be bullied, intimidated and harassed to make documents look right. That is just not true. And I welcome the commissions coming in, and I'm looking forward to more developments of things that were held, that were bad practice. A culture, a culture that took place over a decade, and this should never, ever happen. And this is an opportunity to put these things right. It's probably going to be a slow process, but I have to say that the Labour administration is on your watch. And you made it difficult for us, for me, as a, as a latter person, to ask questions about the practices that were filmed on the committees. When I was challenging and asking questions, my microphone would switch off mid-sentence, and this would be at the price of cabinet better of regeneration. And the chair would choose to come by, this is not acceptable, this kind of practice should not happen anymore. We should not have council meetings with the beauty club and the headquarters. The exogony that's pointed at my party for the reality is coming from you. When you're either the mayor, because I'm not here, or you're the House of Commons, and I ask you to keep it quiet, please. So, Lord Mayor, the report states that the mayor and some councillors were quite, um, were quite bushy, yes, on, on, now, in this being sort of in office, but then, I think that those who behaved in this manner, as conducted themselves by this, the council are waters to shame. I think that members should say, and our system.
I'm here, councillor Wadsworth, and I remind everyone, if you can do nothing else, to see and enjoy these house meetings behind each other. Out of now, I invite councillor Chris Mount to the House of Commons.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. As before, I stopped by to catch a new election to New York. Even though we have different political viewpoints, I want to say to take a difference on your election here, so therefore. Can I also welcome you, councillors, through House of Commons today? And given that the government is likely watching what we do today, I'd like to just a quick point about the year today. In the ODA estimate that it costs, on average, about six pounds, how adjusted it is when the economy is doing well, or rising, out of ten, so it seems to be a very, that's not the level of priorities called in that instance. Turning to the article, I think we've mostly been in agreement with House of Commons' position about the effectiveness of single man reports, or the lack of evidence that we require from our society in relation to single man reports. In particular, the article from the year, under representing for its seeking election, in particular, for its seeking election. Tonight, I am very lucky, my business of year was authored by Mark Barber, and that's often usually the case when I come to House of Commons. And shall that show that I can be here and I can help and work. And I can also do all of that, that can happen as well. I am a very supportive team, I'm a moron, I'm a con artist, often setting in when I need to set away from any meetings or other things. But there are, as I say, aspects of your capital score mechanisms. And I don't see how simple the rules, ultimately, the university system, their representation, particularly, as I say, in relation to women, very, very underrepresented, generally, underrepresented within this authority. I can't see that how this will make life much easier for individuals to get more opportunities, generally. But very simply, our view is that we should look at the original, as I have mentioned, the 20th January, your I T member proposal. And, well, you know, how to do however it is, having a premium system, or honestly, we don't see anything at all. So that's why I suggested that we like to go over the original I T members. We also suggested an alternative that this would be to, however, you will navigate to opt-in over and whatever laws within that. And, look, I mean, looking at the legal party, and I had a lot, I would love to have something here that we can submit to say that we have. A more cautious system, like London, assembly like such, or like the Welsh assembly, but I think we've got to be realistic here. This is not generally realistic, if we're going to submit something serious, we're going to have something that is something on the table that is going to be, that tends to be changed. And there's simply no going to accept that. So our very goal is to renounce, to renounce the way we have, two members, some of the older ones, and others. I think it's a small business that many casters already have, you know. But it's all realistic, and so I'll give it up.
And I now ask councillor and House of Commons to the House of Commons. And I aim the advisements of the council that this will be council of the House of Commons' fair speech to council, so you say, please.
Thank you, my deputy lord. I do like talking about the emotions today, as well as what we like to reach out. I don't know if any of you have spent some time watching TVs at that time, but there's a documentary I see called Certainly Me, Me and the Girls. And you talked about the schools of life in the brown cities. How you can be prepared to sort, recover all disability, both visible and invisible. And how often debilitating physical or mental health is sort of a big deal. I myself know that only too well, as someone who's sort of in the brown cities. If you showed the grit and the fight that those with disabilities have to endure when they see homies or kids, or even they say they're lying. I believe that those experiences should be welcomed and encouraged in this day. I believe that accepting the recommendations of single tier board will see those with disabilities, and indeed, with those who are many to their backgrounds, on miserable situations, discouraged for the same. As it sounds at this moment, I know if I can be sudden, debilitating further by us, residents must see help, still have access to representation, even if it is on a little path. The consequences of accepting a single tier board will be those who face disability or from diverse backgrounds, will not be able to say to the residents, to the way they want it. Somehow, they may feel less than, and they should, they may use enough to help themselves for all at all. I believe we need to be their voice now, so we can recognise that the diversity is enrichment of our democracy, and something they're fighting for. If you do so, we are not saying that we're in this out of report, or we reject the improvements that are recommended, contrary. What we're saying is we attempt to write the wrong side of it, but we will not do it in the extent, we will not do it in the extent of those who are safe. We will not weaken our cities' democracy, and we will not interfere with the improvement in this one's future, to be less, in the best representations of the communities at the light. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor and House of Commons. And I invite councillor Steve Arthur.
Good evening, my gentle lord, and members of the council. Can I say, I think I always supported the labour amendment, because I do believe it is important that we enable new people, young people, make less margin in the council and house, and a more systematic system facilitates that, which I believe really does help those in our existing state as well. So I will support that. But I have to say, having listened to some comments, I overwhelmed by a sense of self-hypocrisy. Let me tell members of this council, many of them, the roles of servants all the time, and I will ask for a majority. Some of the powers, the power of all powers, during the hand era, when the land sales of levations in government, the item of the firm on the agenda with no notice, the constitution was written apart, and the amendments for the Liberal Party Group of Gas Act Committee were not recorded. When we had recorded our objections, we are actually getting more paper. And absolutely, in the hand era, the station handings, the herd of pattern now, were happening out there. It happened over the regime of the story. Oddly, most respects, myself, and as we all have time, attended a public meeting, as defined without rights of the constitution, where the demand by council was to be meeting. We can complain that our lefts were abbreviated, and some have given a full investigation by this government. And the houses were busy, the very person who should have protected our rights, the city's little town, submitted an entry for the council, that the minister of Church asked to leave, and we didn't agree not to have a meeting. We produced evidence that we had not agreed to have a meeting, and we produced evidence that the secret service in church, with the cities' objectives, the immediate events, to say, it is handled through. So I will tell you now, obstruction, and the office that you should have held, obviously, that was having to handle in the government session, it is not new. I say that, as I said before, it's our learning curve. And the learning curve, I think, will do two things, and I appeal to the new membership, and I say it in good faith. I could be a joke about the, the new, the non-heathly barrier and the mess in its spirit, but to be fair, that's not happening. Because the government, right, as far as we're aware, is reforming the governance, this is developing with a very different spirit.
Councillor Arthur, my asking to solve, I mean, to address.
And I'm just saying that the problems have gone on for generations. But when you hold things, the people who should have held the constitution, and support everybody's right, and failed to do so in the past, there's a rash change.
Thank you, councillor Arthur. And I invite councillor Harry Thomas.
Good morning, my honourable members. Councillor Henry, as I was saying before, I support the change. And because the operations are also going to constantly be, that constantly, constantly, for the first features. And the council has a large, huge goal of diversity, which is hugely important, and we need more. But as I say, I ask the council, actually, to accommodate our parents' experience in the new parliament, as they know us. Because that's the third option we want to move in the House of Commons. And to be a citizen to your people across the country, who are our hearts and souls, serve our community, our residents. So I pray to the extra organized authorities. The Labour group against social independence is even, and we have, if we need, a council of our own. of the council, I said, the mind that should have been given to even is our duty to acknowledge our own challenges, not just in the previous Labour administration, but our current approach moves to has lasted way beyond that, to move forward. And what we have to address is the opportunity to indulge that. This opportunity to show our residents, our support, our staff that we are listening and what they've gone through, absolutely just what they've gone through, shapes of our goal. Let's not take the worst way from that and it's only exist of that. And I think now is not the time to really take the moral aspect of how we should evolve. We often times do that, there's ample time to do that, this is my example, and there's a chance for all of us to get that included, residents as well, to support our most important group that we raise in even. And I do consider also the aspects of the report, but now is the time, so I do urge all the people to reject open evidence and to support the evidence we have for this evening and also very obviously ask council people to go forward with a culture that is not just good in the council, but goes across city and goes in our democratic, uh, sector and in terms of, please, without the actual present, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Our final speaker is Mayor Mike, who may respond to the same advice of the mayor.
Thank you, my deputy mayor. I agree with some voters, we may as well also socialize ourselves, and we may as well, as I said, we can go to the ground, we can change things. I think I've been a sadistic, I stand by, I've been sadistic, I've been, I've been sadistic, I've been, 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 I've been.
Thank you, councillor Bell. So fifteen is for the base amendments by councillor Richard Hammond. So, our honourable Speaker, to you, my friends.
Thank you, my deputy mayor. I'm asking a question for, or against, or, uh, our session. Councillor Alex, Councillor Martin, Lidl Bennett, Rufet, Barry Perry, Brans, Chris Brown, Lawrence Brown, Byrne, Carver, Clark, Klein, Coleman, Consham, Connor, Covert, Crofts, Crum, Pines, Trich, Delante, Kino, Disrey, Harry Tomlin, Serdall, Dunn, Gorn, Gibbons, Roy Laddan, Ross Laddan, Ghost, Gross, Hudson, Harvey, Hayden, Perron, Hinks, Hagan, Hurley, Jeeves, Blythe, Cali, Cam, Kennedy, Key, Nim, Nice, Kushner, Billy Lake, Freyzak, Leval, Logan, Meis, Andrew Wilkinson, Liz Wilkinson, Marret, Councillor Bell, Martin Tyler, Mia, Mitchell, Molyneux, Walton, Moby, Murray, Nicholas, Owen, Parsons, Fishes, Prince, Paddy, Rafford, Roberts, Roberts, Miles, Robinson, Sholto, Savage, Simon, Small, Smeed, Story, Sun, Thomas, Thompson, Tuller, Tormey, Walker, Walton, Wood, Woodhouse.
My sources on the base amendments is four fourteen against sixty-four on a sanction. So the source of vote is a post. So if we move on, we have second amendments received by councillor Steve Arthur, which is attached, has been attached to this note. Is the amendment seven minutes? Seven minutes. And councillor Steve Arthur has been to report, which he likes this week.
I would come to say, my deputy mayor, this time, to the other ones. Um, I think on the front, this may be the day, the time when this house will say, Max Alder, uh, holding this way, or these rules, as you say, as this really, as you are, but I see who to talk to, why you want to do the process. And may I say, I personally with the logic, we showed very clearly, and it's bad news to you, he, he was a good interview, that Andrew Hughes, Burgman, like, were small members created a set of, and when we said that as being related value, the guy didn't say anything. He, um, he also said that whilst he, I'm sure he had a spare heart, I'm sure he had a, he would name, he would name primary session votes. So my amendment isn't saying, you don't go down, you don't go for it, what it says is if you believe in the article diversity, you can vote for my amendment and say that now, but in the absence of primary session, we go with the common vote, we go today. And sometimes, it is actually to say, it is meant to say, what we actually will be with all we aspire, rather than go out with the best. So I would regret this meeting, if people who do believe in the article or pretend to believe in the article, actually go to the end of the amendment, because it doesn't say, we should consent to vote for it, it says, we should say what we want, but if that isn't offered, it is a high priority session, you go with the proposals. But I would be very, if anybody picked up the phone and asked him, he will explain the logic of our, of the example. He said very time, I go to the debate of, uh, the wrongs, I'm talking from, the levels we all have, and I think we will need to look at, uh, so many wars, we will need to look at how members' rights as a divided House delegation, um, can be achieved by the delegated or elected deputy of the Labour Council, because if not, we're just getting more than we're missing, their residents lose their rights to representation and I may wish you the day for mine. So if you believe in the article, say so today, if you don't believe it, don't vote for it. But no, the amendment, if we don't believe in the article, offer as an evidence, and other than that, then we will accept the reports work on the current proposals and you'll be wrong with councillor Al, to these representatives, or the other sets.
Thank you, councillor Arthur. And I invite councillor Peter Mitchell, please. Your second amendment.
Well, you feel it's, uh, so particular, you can press, you can, you can, you can give it to us, it's, 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 you have a scrutinized, did you have a challenge, Jane, because suddenly you're, you can raise a side of this panel, you charged scrutinized, policy officers, um, I haven't known this time, this time again, Joe Hudson, where he is, but how many times have we sat on labels, did you scrutinize, did you charge? Absolutely, you did. By the way, who's going to scrutinize, the elections, the commissioners who are going to come to our city and make decisions, who would have had part of the scrutiny? I think it's a legitimate question, uh, and I understand, I don't know if you should be, you know, how you should, scrutinize. I remember after the main committee board, in the main committee board, it is that he talks about the church trial. And the suggestion is, was no scrutiny, as being tried on. That's absolutely untrue. And as a many-